Good evening. Welcome to the North Rose Board of Education. I was it, yeah, I'm getting some feedback or was. Welcome, and I'm Cindy, the board president. I'll open the meeting now. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the agenda. Would someone put a motion on the floor to approve? Jason and Linda? Before we proceed, there is a an addition tonight, and so first, we need to put it on the agenda. So I need a motion that the board accepts in addition to the agenda. Motion, please. I said, and Paul. All in favor? That unanimous and carried. I will be putting that on page six, and it'll become number eight. And at that time, I'll read the resolution, so everyone knows what it is. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. Is there any other discussion? So all in favor of approving the agenda with the addition? Very good. Motion is carried. We do need to go into the executive session, first of all, this evening, and for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a specific employee. Do I have a motion, please? Jason and I said them. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. That means that if you're not on board or haven't been invited to the executive session, you need to sign off, I believe. Tina, you want to take care of that?
Mr. Polin, do you have an idea when people should expect to join again?
Um, 6:35.
6:35, okay. At this time, I would ask the public to please leave the meeting and rejoin about 6:35ish. Everyone has left. If you just want to text me when you're ready, Mike. I'm going to stop the recording. We are all set, Cindy. There's still one person that must be having issues connecting. But they'll join.
All right. Thank you for coming back. For once, we've come back in a timely manner. Next order on the agenda are the presentations, starting with a student presentation that we enjoy. And so, Mike, Christie, well, the introductions to you.
Christie, go right ahead. I know Alejandro's a superstar, and I don't want to steal your thunder because so many people are excited to hear him present. And the team was unanimous, but why don't you give him a proper introduction, please?
Okay. I am very happy to introduce you to Alejandro Gonzalez Romero. Yes, Alejandro definitely came very highly recommended by the fourth grade team to be our presenter this month. He is an extremely active member of our school community and is actually the president of our elementary student council, which he'll be talking a little bit about today. We know that he's going to be an excellent representative of the elementary school and we're excited for him to present to you today. Alejandro, are you ready? Okay, you can unmute, and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Alejandro, and I'm a fourth grade student, and this is Bull's class this year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the elementary school. I have been a student at N W E for five years since I was in kindergarten. Some of my favorite things about school are that I get to see my friends and we get to learn new things. My favorite special area is P E. But I like art, art library and music, too. My favorite subject is writing because we get to come up with new ideas and write about them. We wrote personal narratives this year. I wrote about meeting my friends when I was in U K. This year, I was nominated to be the president of student council. I wanted this role because it allows me to lead and represent the students and make things fair for everyone. We also get to include others' ideas and try to make our school better. Some things we have done this year are come up with our school spirit days, brainstorm ways to lower the noise on lunch and help make behavior videos to use during Cubby Club. What makes our school great is the teachers, and we have lots of fun. I'm excited about going to the middle school next year. I am looking forward to making new friends, playing sports, and being on a team.
Oh, that's wonderful. It sounds like you're having a good year.
Yes, I am.
Yes, and you're learning a lot, and congratulations on being president of student council.
Thank you.
It's a good job. It shows that your, your friends really appreciate your ability to, to, to lead them. Did you say that you worked on how to make it quieter in the cafeteria?
Yes.
How on earth did you do that? I've never heard a quiet cafeteria.
So it's pretty loud in the cafeteria, and then most kids are like saying to the teachers. And when we had our student council meeting, they said that the lunch, like, noise was a little, like, was too loud, and some people couldn't really hear that much. And then, and then we decided just to take notes on what to do during, like, the lunch, during lunchtime. So it can be a lot quieter for everybody.
Oh, my. Well, how wonderful of you to tackle that job. That's a big one. Any board members want to speak to Alejandro?
I just want to say congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that Mrs. Collier stole my question, too, because the cafeteria noise, and you answered it very well. Thank you.
Yes.
Alejandro, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
And I want to know what your favorite sport is.
Soccer.
You wear a soccer jersey?
Yes, I am.
Stand up so we can see it.
Oh, nice.
I thought you were. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Great. Oh.
Yeah, just thanks again for your presentation, and I'm a big soccer fan myself. And also, well done on the student council.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight, and we wish you well in the rest of the year and then next year at middle school.
Thank you.
Alejandro, you clearly are a superstar for us, so we appreciate you very much. And because you've done such a wonderful job, we're going to let you go ahead and log off so you can get on with the rest of your evening, okay, bud?
Okay.
All right, have a great night. Thank you, and thank mom and dad for us, okay?
You, too.
All right, bye bye.
Bye.
Gary is next up with a budget presentation.
Okay, I will get right into it.
Okay.
Okay. Another tough act to follow. Thanks, Alejandro. So, so this is a continuation of our series of budget presentations. Tonight's budget presentation, we're going to really hone in a little bit on the tax levy limit, the tax cap, what our rates will be, and our goals surrounding that. But before I get into that, and before I forget to mention, I just wanted to bring up within the consent, consent agenda tonight is a corrective action plan. Just want to be clear that this corrective action plan is a required document. It has been vetted, if you will, by our audit committee. I think that was back in December. So it is on the agenda here for your approval. It addresses those management letter, the letter of findings as a result from our audit, our 2021 audit. And, and so we have to respond to any of their recommendations. So this corrective action plan, after you approve it, does get remitted to both the state ed department and to the state comptroller's office. So, and we follow up on these items, too. So I just wanted to cover that little piece for you. Okay, so we can start with the first slide here. And as we've began our other budget presentations with our guide, budget guidelines and goals, Tina really wants me to push through this one, but I just want to, on that first slide on the budget goals, we highlighted there the, our stated goal of keeping our tax rate below the 2% level and also staying within the tax cap levy limit. So those, those were, have been our stated goals, and what we're going to show is our recommendation to stay within those goals. Okay?
Sorry, Gary, I didn't know how to go back.
That's okay. That's okay. Everyone has it, right?
Yes.
So, and again, these presentations are getting uploaded onto our website, and they will remain there through, throughout the budget process here and beyond. So if anyone needs to look at the presentation itself, okay? So there's a lot of items, factors that go into the calculation of the tax levy limit. And here is an updated slide, kind of comparing one of those factors. And that is, we have to take a look at the inflation for the year. So highlighted there for, for schools who have a fiscal year ending June 30th. If you come, look at that fiscal year, July 1, those entities beginning July 1, ending July 3, or June 30th, and you slide all the way to 2022 along that row, you'll see that the CPI or the inflation factor is 4.7% for the year. So what we have to do in calculating the levy limit is take the lesser of 2% of the last year's levy or that inflation factor. So although we, we can't raise our levy limit just according to the CPI, that is part of the factor, we can only go up by 2% of the prior year. So when the, when the inflation factor is in fact above the 2%. All right, so that's just to show you where, where we are with CPI and, and our inflation or growth factor, which will be at 2%. So I want to go to the next slide and kind of show you. This is an actual picture of the online form that business, school business officials all go in and begin the process of coming up with, with the levy limit. So the 2% tax cap, I just would like to remind everybody that it's not a 2% on the, on the tax rate. It's on the overall limit that gets spread out among all the, the property owners within the district. Right? So last year, what this summary slide shows right at the very top is our, our, well, which is really the 2122 tax levy amount of 10.117 million, right? And then there's a series of factors that, that are brought into this, and one is called the tax base growth factor. And that is 1.0077 or point seven seven percent, right? And that is a number that is, as the comptroller's office says, pre-populated into this form. So that's not something I can change. But that is based on basically the, the quantity of change in construction and new taxable properties within our school district boundaries. So there's a factor there that, that does affect the levy limit, right? And then we factor in pilots for the current year, and then the pilots for the succeeding year. That's within this formula. And then we have an allowable growth factor, and that's, that's the 2%. Remember, we can't use the inflation factor of 4.7, but we can use the 2%. And then, uh, the, right in the middle, towards the right, you've got the $154,000. And what that is, is the carryover amount from last year's levy. So last year, we did not, we, we did not bring the tax levy up to the allowable limit. We were in fact about 170, I've got it on the next slide, 176,000, thereabouts, under the levy limit. But we're, we're allowed to bring over almost all of that, 154, into this year. So now that says our tax levy limit for the 2223 year is at 10,556. All right? And below that are some other exclusions, which none of those we are able to capitalize on. But that's, that's really okay for this year because we do have, if we go to the next slide, please. This is just showing you the actual carryover, not 176, but 179,000, which was actually kept under the limit last year. And, and we're going to be around there again this year. We were able to, of the 179,000, we were able to actually carry over 154,000. Right? So that does have a, quite a significant impact on the overall increase of our levy from one year to the next. Okay, it's not 2%, it gets calculated differently using that carryover. So if we go to the next slide, please. We saw the number in the previous slide of 10.556 on the levy limit. That's our calculation for next year. That's an increase of $438,000, or in terms of percentages, that would be a 4.33% increase in our levy. So what does that mean? In our next slide, we're going to take a look at three different scenarios. And I would ask that you start looking right to left, or kind of opposite the way we'd normally go. But in example three, what would happen if, at this point in time, we went out at the, at the levy limit, okay? At this time, we're looking at next year's budget is coming in right at the top there, it's coming in at about 3.3% right now. Now, I will say that this budget is not finalized. We're still working on the numbers on both the appropriation side and the revenue side. But we do have, can we go back, Tina?
I am, Megan, how do I go back? I just brushed the screen and it went.
Keep going.
There we go.
That's, that's okay. Okay. Okay.
I got it.
Okay. So if we were to go to the, to the levy limit, and we're looking at about a 3.3 increase on our budget for next year, the change in the levy would be that 4.3%. And the we'd be, you can see the, oh, under and over of the, of the limit, we're, we're right there. But the estimated tax rate would be at about 3.8%, a little over 3.8%. And that's not where we we want to be, right? We've made a commitment to keep that tax rate under 2%. So we want to do two things. We want to stay under the limit, and we want to keep our tax rate, which is estimated rate, rate, right now, would be that 3.8. Now, I have a, a second scenario in the middle there, and that is saying, what if we came in on the tax levy and we came in just at about the amount where we could carry out, carry over that full amount and use it next year? That would be at, at that $156,000. If you see it there down towards the bottom in the middle. What would the effect be on our tax rate then? It would be at, at about 2.3%. We'd still be over our goal of keeping our taxes reasonable below 2%, okay? So the example one on the far left is really where we're shooting for. Again, the budget up at top isn't changing on either of these scenarios. It's just what we apply to the tax levy. Okay, so under the scenario where we can come in on an estimated tax rate of below 2%, this is showing about 1.95, our, our tax levy would be at 10.36 million, okay? Do I have any questions on that right now? Okay, so over to the, the example one is where we want to be. And next slide, please, Tina. So I won't go through the numbers again, but this is where we want to be in our budget. It does reach our budget targets. It's doing everything we can to minimize our budget to budget increase, staying below the tax levy limit, keeping that estimated tax rate below 2%. And some of the challenges, just to remind the board of what we've been dealing with, is we are dealing in an environment now where the inflation is that 4.7%. We have a commitment to maintain our contractual obligations, and we're dealing with, you know, significant increases in our health insurance. And we, looking at our retirement rates, we're going to take a quicker or a deeper look at that in a second here. So next slide, please. So the 3.30, or I'm sorry, the $33.3 million budget that we're, we're looking at now, again, that's kind of a soft number. You're going to get a lot more detail in the, in next coming presentations on budget on both the appropriation side and the revenue side. But this is how we would balance that 3.3, $33.3 million budget, right? So the 2223 revenue column, which is broken down into our major revenue categories. There we have the property taxes on the second line of what you saw previously, of 10.36 million to get to that tax rate of under 2%. So the levy goes up 2.4%, but our rate stays below 2%, right? The levy increase and the rate increase are two different things, and that has a lot to do with our assessments and equalization rates and so forth, everything that goes into to calculating the, the tax levy or the tax rate, I should say. Okay, and this, this slide is also showing our big revenue item, obviously, is state aid of just under 5%. Since I did this, I know I'm going to be revising that state aid number down a little bit. I've got, we've got some categories, especially BOSI's aid category with the governor's run that is exaggerated a little bit. So I, I know we need to bring that down a little bit. So if we bring the state aid down, we may be looking at increasing what I'm showing here as far as use of reserves to help balance our budget, okay? Everything else will pretty much remain the same. I do want to point out the bottom row in lieu of taxes there, although not a significant amount of money relative to our budget. I just wanted to say that these are payments in lieu of taxes. So just to remind the board what those are, those are negotiated agreements between businesses and the Wayne County Industrial Development Agency, the IDA, which is operated under the, the county economic development department. And so this is basically agreements between the county and these businesses who are adding or creating new building space in the hopes of also hiring more more employees, bringing more tax revenue actually into the county and helping out the county. So it is a, a way and a successful way that the county has expanded business by working with businesses with the IDA. And what happens is portions of that property comes off our tax rolls. But the agreement states that the, these entities, these businesses still make payments to the school district. So we have some amounts coming off the tax roll, but then we're getting it back in that in lieu of taxes. Okay? Just wanted to kind of clarify that. Thank you, Tina. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to bring back this slide you've seen before. We have some updates on it, and we now have a finalized rate on our health insurance. If we skip down there, we were looking at an estimated 25% increase. That was the word that we had received to kind of plan on back in November. It, the board, the, our, our consortium for our health plan, it's called Flash Up, the Finger Lakes Area School Health Plan. It consists of around 37 school districts. It's a very large plan, one of the largest in New York State. It's been very good over the years, but the last couple of years, it's been, the fund balance has gone down for a variety of reasons. So that is necessitating a fairly, a very significant increase in our health insurance rates for next year. So we, we are coming in at just under 22%, 21.9% on our health insurance rate. So that's the best, biggest benefit line item in our budget. So it has a big impact, and it's one of our biggest challenges. When we, when we do look at budget to budget, it's, it's, a, a lot of it is attributable to our health insurance increase. And why is our health insurance going up so much? I did have a conversation with our, with our health, health plan consultant, and he could go into a lot more detail and spend a lot of time, but I'm going to boil it down to three different things, basically. And Mr. Pullen can jump in. I know he's heard, heard the spiel before. He understands what's going on here with the health insurance. But one of the factors I think we can all relate to and understand is the effect of COVID has had on, on the health industry. So we've seen a significant rise in cost due to our relative or related to COVID. The other area is the, within our plan, there has been a substantial increase in very, very high cost payments over the last couple of years. And I don't have any specifics due to HIPAA and all that. And um, I don't have any specifics due to HIPAA and all that, but um, he he did talk to uh, and gave me an example of one particular uh family and then the children, they're very, very um, high cost and it actually um uh, has an, has a a direct impact on our healthcare plan. Okay, the the third increase in in health costs has to do with uh uh, the dramatic increase in drug prices. So the plan itself, it's been a very stable plan. It has, over the last couple of years, been drawing down on its fund balance. Just like we have a fund balance, so does this plan. So over the last couple of years, it has lost um a significant amount of money drawing down that fund balance. So uh, the the plan is still solvent. It's still good. Um, but uh, the the board did meet and to to be prudent to keep this plan uh, in the black and sound, uh, they came up with with that amount of an increase. Okay? So for our budget, uh, our health insurance line item in our budget, the current year is just under four million dollars. And when we go up twenty twenty two percent, uh, that is going to be uh, over an eight hundred thousand dollar increase on our budget. So uh, but we are dealing with it. So and you'll be seeing that um uh, you'll be given a presentation on the entire budget and where we have increases and where we have some reductions, right? And also the uh, and and how the revenue picture fits into all that. But we'll be presenting a sound balanced budget. Okay, uh, next slide, please. Yeah, I forgot to mention on previous site slide also, we do know the um the uh, TRS retirement rate. Thank you. You went back. I skipped over that, but uh, we did get that just the other day and the increase is going from nine point eight percent to ten point two nine. That's a five percent increase on that rate. Okay, so in that five percent increase is much more manageable than say the health healthcare costs. I just want to say that we do know that now that's factored into our budget and we're we're kind of good to go there. Okay, thank you. So I wanted to uh, share with the board what the propositions will that we'll be looking at for this year. And that's, we're looking at uh, presenting four proposition. The first three we see every year. Right? The first one is to approve the budget and we're looking at a bu- budget of around that thirty three point three million dollars. That number um, will be as as we tighten up uh, this budget and fine tune it. That will be uh, uh, more thoroughly defined. The second proposition will be for the purchase of our buses. And we'll be talking more about that, more specifically about that, but we're looking at purchasing five buses. And the amount there, um, we now know is going to be about five hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Uh, pretty much on par with what we've been doing over the last uh, couple of years anyhow. Uh, the third proposition is for the um, for the two local libraries. That will be on there as always, but that now the fourth proposition, you've seen these before. But uh, we'll need to establish a new capital reserve fund. So the current capital reserve fund, although it was just established in two thousand seventeen and it had a ten year life, it's already reached its funding cap of five million dollars. So uh, what I would recommend is uh, to establish a new reserve for our future projects and cap it at a higher level. It sounds like a lot. But when we're looking at funding a reserve for future building projects over the next ten years, it's not that much. So, but it's something that that needs to be talked about and explained a a little bit. Uh, to go from a a five million dollar reserve to a fifteen million dollar reserve. So the current capital reserve, uh, as you know, um, we started the year or last year ended the year, I should say, at just over three million dollars. That entire amount is going to support our new uh, capital project, that eleven point one million dollar project that uh, we have going on underway currently. So uh, we will need to establish a new reserve for future projects. Okay, so I wanted to share with you those propositions. Uh, next slide. As always, just to uh, keep us focused on where we are and what lies ahead of us in terms of this budget process uh, is our uh, key dates on our our budget. So over the next several board meetings, you will be start to see um, much more uh, the the whole budget picture on both the revenue expense side. We'll be breaking that down for you. Okay, that's all I have for now. Are there any questions?
Gary, I have a question on the buses. Yes. If we're using the bus res- reserve, that is um as we always do, do we not need to then uh, have a proposition to create a new bus reserve for future uh, use?
You'll probably need to create a new bus reserve next year. The current reserve still has a a life expectancy, uh, I think of two more years. Uh, and it has not reached its funding cap. So over the next several months, um uh, I I know in the past you've done two resolutions, one in March and one in June to replenish that reserve, right? And um, so I'll probably do the same thing. I don't think the March resolution is necessary at that time. But what we um, aim to do is replenish that reserve uh, the majority of it with aid that we get on our uh, bus purchases. Right? And that's the piece that you would approve normally in March. And then in June, uh, you also approve an additional transfer for that local share. Once we uh, determine what our surplus might be at the end of the year and authorize transfers into our various reserves, we also um, plan on approving an an additional amount to go into that reserve. The total amount um, I'm shooting for is is over uh over that five hundred thousand dollar threshold. So what we're authorizing to spend out of it this year, we will replenish it to keep that reserve going. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then I had a question. Cindy, I had a question.
All right, go ahead. I can't see anyone, so go ahead.
Okay, Gary, the governor stated proposal, we've got that. But as I recall, it's always uh, you know, a race to the finish there in April. But I think the next line, the April one state budget due, that's that's reality, right? That's what we really get as opposed to the proposal.
Is that correct? The legislature passes a budget on time. Um, we will get the new legislative aid runs. So um, yes, that's what we expect and and anticipate. We we pretty much can rely on the governor's budget in terms of what to budget for. So uh, by the time that budget, uh, by the time the legislative passes the budget, our budget will pretty pretty much be in place. Okay, I think it. So it just her, just to go back to that timeline real real quick. So the state budget is is due on the first. Uh, we are going to plan on having a budget work session a week later where you will see the finalized budget on the seventh. And then a week later, uh, at a regular board meeting, the the board will um, hopefully adopt that budget. Okay? So the hopefully the board and the public will have no surprises because we're going to uh, and keep you informed, just like I'm I've tried, been trying to do. Uh, as we get information, like tonight, I I shared, we got our new health insurance rates and our new rate on um on the teachers' retirement system that have a big impact on our budget. As we go along, I'll keep you informed and we'll be looking at the budget in more and more detail. So um, we'll lead up to that April fourteenth uh, vote. You know, hopefully with uh, a high level of comfort that we put together a su- a sound budget.
Gary, I believe John has a question. John? He's got his hand up. John? Must be his computer's frozen. I guess, I guess John will have to hold his question for later. There he is. John, you're back? John, you will have to ask uh, your question of Gary uh, through.
Not a question, but the the April timeline, I think is extremely good. Because then there are, for the board there. Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, and um, really by the end of March, by the end of March, you'll you'll have a a pretty solid picture of the budget.
Anything at some length time.
Yep, it's just some fine, fine tuned.
Am I back?
There's a slight delay, John. So what you're, what you projected is coming out in a delayed format. So Gary, you're right, you know, we're going through and we'll have a transparent and crystal clear budget by the time the board has to adopt. So I think we're we're in good shape. So good job tonight. Um, Cindy, if you don't mind, we'll keep everything moving going into our driver's ed presentation. Um, I'd like to welcome Scott Bradley and Matt Savino into the uh, presentation tonight. And hit, turn it over to them to get started before uh, we go to the elementary school improvement plan update right afterward.
Thank you, Mr. Pollan. Appreciate it. Um, can everybody see that screen there?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to share this proposal with the board tonight. Um, you know, bringing a driver's ed course to North Rose Walket would really be a benefit for a lot of students. Um, and we'd like to share just how we'd like to do that moving forward. Um, and I know it's something that's important to the board. So Matt Savino is joining me. Uh, Matt's currently a a reading teacher here at the high school. It's his first year at NRW, but he comes to us with a great deal of prior experience, some of which was teaching driver's ed and summer programs. So he's got the background to be able to um, work in this sort of program. And we're excited to have his expertise here at NRW. Um to get us started, I want to just call attention to the the strategic action plan of the district and highlight some of the areas where I feel like a driver's ed program um, supports that plan. You'll notice uh, the community promises of equity, academic and the financial promise. Um, throughout the presentation tonight, I think you'll see those things really get highlighted um, and come out as how this program specifically ties into fulfilling those community promises. When we got started uh, in putting this proposal together, we felt like it was important to have student voice. Um, we wanted to know if there was interest in taking a driver's ed program if it was offered. So we asked teachers to give a brief survey to students in the high school, uh, all students in grades nine through twelve, just to see, you know, would they want to take it if we were able to offer it? Um, about sixty percent of the high school responded to the survey, which is a pretty good amount to take part. Um, and you'll see that, you know, there's, there's a good bit of interest from the students who responded. Um, over seventy seven percent of students said if driver's ed was offered during the school year, they'd be interested in taking that. Um, over half of the respondents said they'd be interested in a summer program. Um, you know, sometimes it's easier to have the free time to do something like that in the summer. And so providing that opportunity would be uh, beneficial for a large number of our students. You know, considering we surveyed some of the younger students as well, who will be uh, who aren't quite at driving age yet. Um, not everybody has their permit or their license, uh, but there is the interest. So I think that that's important as students move through the high school that, you know, we'll be helping them get those permits and then eventually hopefully get their licenses. Um, and with that, I'd like to allow Mr. Savino to just share a little bit of what the course itself would look like um, here at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley, and thank you, Mr. Pollan. Thank you to the board for this wonderful opportunity. I really enjoy working at NRW with with the students and the staff there. Um so I appreciate it and I appreciate all of you. Um, I I love this opportunity because I think it's such a practical course. And the the biggest thing that this course does, it improves our driving skills and um reduces recklessness is is one of the things that that I see in a lot of inexperienced drivers. I see a lot of recklessness and uh I uh, you know, that through the course, we just increase safety and confidence with kids and uh, really, I I try to just help them be uh, the best drivers they can be and and um I uh, I I, there's, it it, putting it in a, in a Google slide really doesn't do it justice, but these are definitely a lot of the 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 main points when we're behind the wheel of a car and in the classroom. And we'll uh, speak to that specifically more in a moment. Would you do the next? Thank you. Um, another benefit to this course is students can earn their MV two eighty five. Uh, this is a certificate of completion of driver's ed. And uh, this allows students that um, gain, gain this certificate to drive after nine when they're seventeen years old. And depending on your insurance company or the student's insurance company and their families, uh, there's a possibility, and I I think it's true uh, most of the time, uh, possibility for insurance discounts, which is awesome for for our kids out in in NRW. I think this is a a big selling point. Also, with uh, one of the benefits of uh, driver's ed, students can get their MV two seventy eight, which is, it's known as the five hour course certificate. Um, you, they do a a certain amount of time in the course. I can write these or we can issue these certificates and that allows kids to um, sign up for the road test. And one of the greatest things I think about driver's ed, kids, if they pass, and they must pass it in the car with at least a sixty five and in theory class to receive a half a credit, which is awesome and uh, very achievable. Another benefit for driver's ed uh, in in this, towards the end of the course, we've always um, given them like a mock test, driver's ed or a a driver's exam uh, is typically about five to ten minutes long. We we put kids through the the rigors or stuff like that, so they know what to expect. Classes, classes at NRW for driver's ed, I envision envision them as a third of it being presenters on topics such as distracted driving, road rage, uh may, maybe a law enforcement offer officer, like a state trooper, we've had a lot in the past, uh, or deputies uh, definitely have to have motorcycle awareness, which is um has to be included in this course, which is was is fantastic. An another third of this class would consist of projects, things like road sign projects, uh distracted driving papers, one to two page papers, zero tolerance papers, another one that, that I employ. And we do work with DWI visuals. And, and the final third of driver's ed consists of tests and videos. And they're, they can be very powerful and highlight as a driver's ed for sure. The time requirements for kids, for students, they have to spend at least twenty-four hours in theory, direct classroom instruction. And for the car, six, they have to do twenty-four hours of driving to get their two eighty-five. And that is six hours of driving and eighteen hours observation behind the wheel. Not behind the wheel, but in the car. Anytime we're in the minute, in the car, every minute is a teachable moment. It's a classroom. I treat it as such and, you know, we're always learning in the car and they observe and learn so much. There's no phones. We always lock them away and, and that's one of the biggest things these days. You know, to, to teach children and inexperienced drivers to keep their chin up and eyes moving. These units are taught in the car. I'm not going to read them all off to you, but things that I like to highlight. We have one oh four, one oh four is an interesting road. It's not really a highway yet, yet. Some of it, some people drive like it's a highway. So it'll be a lot of driving on one oh four. And things like merging and, and turning is a, is a, is a big thing that we do and, and braking and stopping. These are a little bit more specific. You see all the parking that we do. Places like Woolcot, that, that picture on the right there. Definitely going to be parking in those spots quite a bit with parallel parking and, and things like that. In the classroom, these are the units that we cover in, in pretty much the order that we cover them. The first one, we always manage our risk. There's so much that goes into this stuff. So you know, I, I, I'm trying to always be better with my presentations and really get, cause kids to anticipate in, in classroom and, and try to really set them up for success when we get on the road. So it, it's just a an excellent opportunity for, for all the kids and, and the community as well. And again, go ahead.
All right. Sorry, Matt. So as you can see, it ties back to a lot of those community promises that we have in our plan. When I think back to Regent Norwood's presentation and some of the things that he brought up, an underlying factor in a lot of the things was access to, to certain things and being able to get to different locations where, you know, there's healthcare and healthy food and those types of things that he, he brought up in his presentation and teaching kids to drive and be able to get to places safely is a, is a really important life skill that they'll carry with them for the rest of their life. And as Mr. Savino pointed out, you know, driving is one of the most dangerous things that a lot of our students will ever do. And especially, you know, where we're located with, you know, going back and forth on one oh four. It's important that they spend the time really learning that skill. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to share this with you tonight and we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Oh, it's a great presentation and everything you said about safety and the need in our area for this, we fully support that that's a important thing. Board members, do you have any comments? Linda?
Just happy to see this being presented again. I know in years past, there was a rather limited program more in the summer than throughout the school year. It's just going to be so much more beneficial that more students will benefit.
Yeah, I remember the summer program and I remember one of the problems was kids had to get transportation to the high school and it limited whether they could take the course or not. So, yeah. Paul?
Just capturing that five hour course is helpful. And by the way, hi, Matt. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Paul.
Because I remember for both of our, of our students, we had to go somewhere to get that five hour course that was difficult to schedule. And then it was time consuming to go and get back. So just having that ready at our school. And I've seen some signs that we offer that on occasion anyway, but that's, that's a real, that's a genuine benefit that I wanted to highlight.
I agree. And I already have students since September. I, I'm, I'm, I'm being proactive with them. Some kids are being proactive that are already sixteen, seventeen years old. They're, they're sort of going through this process now and trying to point them in the right direction. And, and pretty soon we'll be able to write them right, right out of the office. So I, I think that's going to be awesome. It's really going to kickstart a, a lot of our sixteen and seventeen year olds, I hope.
Hi, Sarah.
I'm glad to see the kids getting a chance to get it here within the year. I know my son had to get it through BOSI's. And I think we paid like over three hundred dollars because he's in his thirties now. Over three hundred dollars for the class. And if he missed one class for whatever reason, then he couldn't get the insurance. He could attend the classes and he got the information. But the insurance portion of it and the written certification, whatever that they completed the class, they couldn't get because the timeline was so tight for them that there was no room to breathe. So I'm glad to see that the kids are going to actually get a chance to live and, and do what is it should be done.
Thank you. Yeah. So there'll definitely be a home for drivers at NRW, which has already begun.
Cindy, I just want to say thank you to you and the board for having the foresight to push our thinking and bring these types of programs back to the school district. I mean, there's a lot to be said about fostering relationships with our students and teaching them the relevant life skills that we know they're all going to need for the future. So thank you for that. I appreciate the board's support and I appreciate the program. And Matt, you and Scott did a fantastic job tonight. So we're going to turn it over to the elementary group and let them get going with some of these reports so that people can get on with their evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to present to you this evening. I am joined by the members of the elementary SLT team to give you an update on our school improvement plan. We are very excited to share with you all the amazing things going on at the elementary school and the continued progress that we see, are seeing across the building. Here with me tonight is Lucia Copeland, one of our UPK teachers, Karen Hake, one of our third grade teachers, Dawn McIntyre, another third grade teacher, Megan Penikoff, one of our instructional coaches, and Matt DiJambatista, our assistant principal. This year has given us ample opportunities to infuse our mission and vision into our building. As you will hear tonight, we continue to find ways to foster connections, build partnerships and engage students in learning that will continue to prepare them for their future path. We are especially excited to share our current benchmark data with you. This chart shows Ames Web proficiency levels at each grade level. The first column represents fall proficiency rates compared to the second column, which shows the, shows levels on the winter benchmark given about three weeks ago. As you can see, all grade levels have shown an increase in proficiency. We are especially pleased to see the increase in reading at grade two, showing twenty-four percent growth and grade three with a thirteen percent increase compared to the fall. Additionally, all grade levels produce double digit increases in the area of mathematics with grade four currently at a seventy-nine percent proficiency rate. As we have continued to look at trend data, it has become apparent that our goal of ninety percent proficiency rate by the end of the year is very much attainable, given the growth rates we have seen thus far. Our team will take the next few minutes highlighting some of the shifts and systematic changes we have put into place over the last few months to make these gains possible.
Our first goal is partnership. We continue to focus on increasing two-way communication with the community to foster positive relationships with students, families and community members. Report card updates have been a focus. At NRWE, our SLT gathered information from parents and teachers regarding the current report card. It was noted that the current report card was lengthy and not parent friendly and that there were inconsistencies. We are working to create a simplified report card that will use prioritized skills and standards and have consistent language around academics and behavior expectations across the grade levels. Monthly meetings are held between our administration and the parent liaison Samantha Gardner to foster communication with parents and the community. Within our school building, nurses passes are being utilized by teachers when sending students down to the nurse. This communicates why the student is being sent down to the nurse. The nurse then is able to follow up with families using parent square or a nurse's note to communicate important information. We are also continuing community partnerships with Mosaic Dental, which provides a dental exam for students at school, the Lions Club, which provides eyewear, Cornell Cooperative Extension, which will be bringing nutrition sessions in our PE classes as well as cooking matters classes with our families. Rouse Theater continues to provide arts and education performances to our students.
Our action steps for equity continue to foster student voice and leverage learning gaps by focusing on student needs. We've shared in previous presentations about primary project and we're happy to report that this has been fully implemented beginning just last week. This research-based early intervention program is geared for students in K two and helps young students get a healthy start in school. So currently, Primary Project has already identified ten students in first and second grade. They held the teacher meetings to discuss individualized goals for those identified students. The teacher then contacted parents. A schedule has been created for the care manager. And those students in Primary Project will meet weekly with Mrs. Mendon Hall in the playroom for thirty minutes. Through play, students will learn self-control, self-regulation and build confidence with their social skills. So we've also made instructional coaching model shift this year, which is really exciting. In addition to those weekly meetings that we have one-on-one with teachers as coaches, once a month, we'll be offering some additional coaching opportunities to meet the learning needs of teachers and students. Some examples include co-teaching with teachers. We've done a lot of co-planning as well, focusing on different unit plans for teachers and supporting in the classroom. We've been supporting with progress monitoring through Ames Web, digging into the data even deeper than we can usually. Organizing instructional materials for teachers just to help do that front-loading work so that they're ready just to teach modeling lessons for teachers in the classroom, covering the classes so that the teachers can then observe other classrooms and setting up those observations for teachers. Using the tier one implementation tools to actually give feedback on classroom visits when we're coming in based on when the teachers are asking us to observe. And then just some, some push and support by the coaches. Different areas, different behaviors that teachers are having concerns with or subjects that they just want feedback on, we're coming in and supporting there. And this coaching model has been very well received by a lot of teachers in our building. It's given the coaches the opportunity to be more responsive to instructional needs. And that continued learning about, around the implementation of collaborative classroom and other tier one components. We're excited because this model seems to be having a direct impact on student learning.
Our third goal of social emotional is to build and maintain those positive relationships through respect and just contributing to our school community. We also are going to continue to create those opportunities and celebrate staff and students. Some of the ways that we have been doing this, we have interactive bulletin boards throughout the school and staff and students are allowed to participate and build our community by contributing to the bulletin board. So for example, in the third grade hallway, we have a acts of kindness bulletin board where you could take a post-it and place your act of kindness on the board and it's been building and growing throughout the school year. We also have on Friday mornings, staff has the opportunity to participate in For You Fridays. It's once a month. Some of the activities we're able to do to promote wellness and positivity are yoga, walking, meditation, healthy eating, arts and crafts, Tai Chi, basketball, and a bunch of other fun activities. Our tier one support is being identified in the classroom. So for K two, the students take a comment, comment survey. And in three, four, they take panorama. The mental health team and administration teachers, the data is reviewed. And we use this to support the students and differentiate their support. So they will, could receive skills groups with the counselors or the mental health team. Check-in, check-out, which will be discussed in the next, actually the next goal and primary project, which you just heard from Megan. Some more push and support in identified classrooms from the mental health team is second step. Second step is a holistic or whole child approach. So looking at the big picture to social emotional learning. This teaches the children to make better choices, gain confidence and set goals for improving their decision-making and for building relationships with each other and with staff. We're using the digital program that is being offered and right now it's being used in all kindergarten classes and identified second grade class and our special class.
The fourth goal in our school improvement plan is academics, maximizing student support and personalized learning through our instructional models and MTSS. We continue to use our team within teams model. Our focus has been on tracking the rate of improvement for students to ensure our supports are helping them make growth. Adequate progress is a rate of improvement score at or above the national average. The goal scores are based on individual student starting points. The team within team model provides supports for all classrooms during IDR, small group reading and math. Special education classrooms receive additional writing support. And ENL classrooms receive additional vocabulary support. This model ensures that supports meet the instructional needs of all students. Another way student support is maximized is using the tier two intervention, check-in, check-out. Identified students work with a mentor to help improve the student's behavior. This program is implemented and monitored by a check-in, check-out coach on the MTSS team. In the first cycle of the intervention, the nine identified students completed six weeks of check-in, check-out at a seventy-nine percent success rate. The goal success rate is eighty percent. After reviewing the mid-year data, eighteen students will begin the new cycle next week.
Our last and final goal is finance and really just to develop effective procedures for finance, ordering supplies, materials and resources. So we've really worked hard with Gary closely to finalize our timeline and have rolled out the new process and forms for our staff this week. We really look, we're really looking at our supplies closely. And have begun doing, we're going to start doing an ongoing inventory to help us know what we have and what the staff should and what they need to order and what they shouldn't order or don't have to order. We're also in the process of starting a teacher supply closet for any office supplies that they may need, things like paper clips, staples and metal rings. The new request form and process, we've put in place a requisition form for teachers to use to purchase items for this year, which has really streamlined that process. And lastly, we've worked with Sarah McLean and Bridget Bar to pool resources to purchase certain items that are really interconnected with the building special ed as well as the grant programs.
So as always, we would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for your continued support. And we would like to open it up to, for you to ask us any questions about our presentation.
Thank you. It's wonderful to see.
Thank you. It's wonderful to see the progress that's being made. It shows a lot of hard work by staff and teachers, that's for sure. Our students are progressing. That's great. Any other board members? I think we're very happy.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. When I, when I got the report for this meeting, I remembered that our grades from last spring to this fall backslid. In fact, they were somewhat like eye-opening, if not worse. So what I did is I went all the way back to go, well, how were we doing last spring? And for the sake of our board members, not only have we caught up from where we used to be before we backslid, so the NRWE crowd has not only stopped the backslide, but actually, we have forged ahead in most cases from where we were last spring. So that, I think, deserves great applause. I want to point out a couple of specifics, though. For Grade Four, in the spring of last year, 21, yeah, 21, their proficiency in ELA was 58%, so they're kind of an outlier. They went up to 60% in the fall, which was one of the very few improvements, but now they're up to 69%. Even more dramatic was that they were 63% in the spring of 21. They backslid to 48, another at 79. That is just awesome, and I just want to say, well done.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to make the comment that in listening to and seeing how things are being so very fine-tuned, and you're really zeroing in on providing the extra support in very specific areas and skills that students need. And I think that really contributes to your success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for presenting that all to us tonight. I think we can move on to the building liaisons, the board. Let's see. Isetta, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do. Mrs. Christie, Mrs. Graves contacted me, and we have several things that we want to celebrate. One is the Student Council began meeting this year, and they have elected their officers. We've already met their president. He gave a wonderful report to us. We have a vice president, Braxton Anjo. I think, okay. And Secretary Addie Davis. They've, yeah, Dennis, Addie Dennis, and their treasurer is Danny Lake. So congratulations to all the students who won their elections. And they also want, she also wanted to recognize Elizabeth Thacker for hitting the ground running this year with COVID and working with the school and fitting in very well and working both with the staff as well as the students. She seems to be a very good fit for that work. Very excited. And lastly, they have started the staff breakfast again, and the Sunshine Club is providing the breakfast, and the staff is really enjoying just being able to get together and interact with each other within their building, and for that, everybody is appreciative. And thank you very much, Mrs. Graves.
Thank you. Good. John, do you have anything from the middle school?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, penny awards. Last time I talked about that, there was a competition with the grades. All the grades were contributing pennies, and they were going to add them up at the end of the year. Not the end of the year, but the end of the contest. And $545 were donated to the Ronald McDonald House. They're very proud of that. I do not know which was the leader, but also, they had the Valentine's Cougar Store. And when students meet expectations, they get cougar dollars, cougar cash. They can buy locally donated items, and the kids are very excited about that. On a more mundane side, the middle school ELA and math sets will start ELA in March and math in April, and I'm sure everyone's looking forward to that. And tomorrow is going to be an awards assembly for second quarter, and they're going to honor the students on the honor roll. They have persistence and citizenship awards as well. And I don't know why, I'm on a different computer, so I'm interested why the sound is not on the other one, but
Yeah.
There you go.
You're sounding just fine. Thank you. Linda, do you have anything for the high school? I think you're muted, Linda.
Sorry. I did get to speak with Scott, and a lot of good things are going on as usual at the high school. Of course, they've started their second semester, and there's a group at the high school called Speak Out that is sponsoring a way to celebrate Valentine's Day so that each student at the high school is going to be receiving a Valentine note that celebrates them that will come from staff members. And in another area, there were quite a few students that received art awards that were submitted to the regional RIT art show. So that was something that, that we can be proud of, the very talented artists. They also received, several students also received awards from Scholastic Art regionally, and there will also be, I'm not sure if it's next week or the week after, but Wayne County has a student art show, and of course, many of our talented art students are going to be involved with that as well. In addition, the work has started for the yard signs that seniors will be proudly displaying in their yards this spring to honor them in their senior year. And the last item is a little different in the date that it's going to be happening. There will be a theatrical production, but it will be in April rather than March, and the title of the play is Urantown. And I may have more information next month.
I recall that. It's musical. That's a good one. That's great. Linda, do you have anything to report from Fort County?
No, actually, this coming Saturday is Legislative Committee, so I don't really have anything new. I do know, you know, we all saw the propositions that were going forth for the state, and this month, there's also the federal propositions going, and I'm, I'm thinking this next week is when that event happens at the federal level.
Okay, great. Thank you. John, do you have any, a report from the Safety Committee?
Yes, I couldn't give it the last time. It was several meetings ago. State trooper was giving an overview of training he's going to be doing in March and the dangers of students sharing videos and blackmail and the negative side of things, not the positive, like the arts, okay? Cyberbullying. They're also working on the different buildings on cold weather evacuation plans. What they're going to do in cold weather, when it's like, like tomorrow is going to be next to zero. They're also talking about, they went around the buildings and the middle school, they were happy that the doors are more secure now, and the cameras are effective, and the bus loop is much safer than it was in previous years. And the very strong point I found was the SRO communication. They do talk together and with the staff, which is a real strong point, and I think all parents should be aware that our SROs do a tremendous job in keeping our kids safe. And hopefully, they never have to be used. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do you want to have anything, have any report from the Policy Committee?
Yes, please. I've been warning everyone that there were a bunch coming, and so now, now you see what I'm talking about. We've got five. Fifteen, ten, I will go reach one of them briefly just to highlight what, what the changes are. Fifteen, ten is a change. Some of them, just to bring it up to, you know, make it more personal for our district. But I really want you to focus on paragraph four. We've been working since I became a board member on, on how we run our meetings and how we get an idea, and I'll use the Jasons of the, of the electric buses as an example. How do we get an idea from, oh gee, I thought of this while I was driving down 104 into in front of the board to discuss it? So please take a hard look at paragraph four, Cindy, and I think we've captured everything from our handbook committee. And, and one more thing, there's a highlighted yellow portion. That's just required because of what Governor Hokel said. We've been doing, we've been putting out our agenda in advance anyway. That's just putting it into our, our policy. And Jason had asked, how do these policies reflect on a strategic action pan, plan, and I would go with this one. It's really about our board, but it's, I would say, understanding, respectful, and, and actually, relationships and engagement. So it's really about how do we run our board meetings and conduct ourselves in the best possible way. The next policy is 3420. It's just a revision, and really, the biggest change is that we had to include names for our civil rights officers. And in this case, I see that Gary's still with us, and Megan, those are the names that have been inserted into the policy. So if they were to change, we'd have to change the policy. So Fred and Megan, I want you to know you're going to have to be with us for a long time because we certainly don't want to keep changing the policy. Other than that, it's just, it's just an upgrade for this year. And certainly, it's so the title is non-discrimination and harassment, anti-harassment. That falls right on the community promises of partnership, equity, and social and emotional. The next one is the 17-page document. This originally was 20. Our Harris Beach attorney reduced it to 17, so for that, we're grateful. It's still huge. It's a required policy, and it's also new. John and Linda and I have, have asked so many questions on this. I think Tina and our attorney don't ever want to hear from us again on it, but we've really beat this thing up, and if you've got any questions on this one and any of the policies, please ask me. But it's a long one. It's required, and be happy to answer any questions on it. Again, with this one, Title IX, the sex discrimination, right along partnership, particularly equity, and certainly social and emotional. Our next policy is 7551, sexual harassment of students. It's just an upgrade. It's a really good policy. It's been upgraded to, to really to these, you know, 2022. And again, I think we, we had to insert names in this one, if I remember correctly. And regardless, take a little, a quick look at it. It's a good policy. Again, right along community promises, partnerships, equity, certainly social and emotional. The last policy that's up for our first read is 7560, which is a notification of sex offenders and conditions on sex offender access to school property. This is, this is a revision, but it's a significant revision. Okay, we had a policy. This one was really rewritten by Harris Beach and to more, again, personalize it for our district and bring it up to 2022 standards. So I would encourage you to take a good look at that one. I think you'd be very satisfied with it. And what I do want to point out one thing is, you know, I mean, the whole subject just kind of makes you nervous, but it gives us, gives a superintendent of a district great leeway on how to give access when it's appropriate and how to prevent access when certainly being there would be inappropriate. Once again, on that one, I would go back to Cougar values of understanding our relationships, and I would say, I would even say engagement. So a lot of policies coming at you. Please take a first read. Let me know.
All right. Thank you very much. That completes our reports and correspondence. Tina, is there anyone that has signed up for public access?
No, I did not have anyone contact me.
All right. Well, move on. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Tina and Linda? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Motion is carried with everyone. That takes us over to page five. Five of the agenda. And number seven, policies. The the resolution for approval of policies. These are, this is the second read. Is there a motion to approve? Jason and John? Discussion? All in favor then of approving the policy? Motion is carried. Now we go to number seven, which is the resolution that we voted to add to the agenda. I will read the policy or the, the resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreement between the Superintendent of the Schools of the North Rose Central, Wolkett Central School District, the Rose Wolk, North Rose Wolkett Teachers Association, and Paul Peterson, executed on January 31, 2022. Is there a motion, please, to approve this? Tina and Paul? Their discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. We come to the good news. Does anyone have good news? Jason?
I just want to congratulate, I just want to congratulate the, the wrestling team for their outstanding third place this weekend at sectionals. We have two or three students going to super sectionals, and I just wanted to give them a little recognition.
Absolutely. Duke was saying there was a lot of success for the track, with the track and field as well. John?
Just today, there was a Facebook picture of our swim team, and I think each individual swimmer had his picture taken. We also were, we had results in the league, Finger Lakes League, and the invitationals for swimming. And a lot of sports were in the basketball, girls and boys, bowling, girls and boys. And it just points out when you look at all the offerings that we have, how well our district does. And if you compare it to some other districts, they're not doing nearly as well with the athletics as we are. And I don't mean necessarily win-loss records, but allowing students to have participation. We also had North Rose Wolkett student artwork on display at RIT. I think that was mentioned. It was in the Lake Shore News, some pictures of some of the things that I find impossible to think about doing. But our students do them on just wonderful artwork they do. Also, both these culinary arts students had a soup competition. That's another thing that I don't really expand my skills in doing. Also, they had Wayne Technical and Career had their report card, and we had a number of students that were listed from North Rose Wolkett. And we have Clarkson. University had a list of students from Wolkett, I won't list them all there. But there was a whole group of them. That are all from Wolkett and there probably others that I missed out on, but I think. There's a Michael Statsky of Wolkett, New York. Junior majoring in Mechanical Engineering, named Presidential Scholar. He only had a, he must have a minimum of three point eight. To carry fourteen credit hours, so I think we have, but we had a number of other ones that were also in there. Clarkson's a good school and having that many students in majoring in. Chemical engineering. All sorts of things they're in, which is exciting to me. That our kids are taking advantage of our school and going on and going to good colleges and doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Congratulations to your son, Paul.
Thanks, well, I want to peg you back on that because indeed he was on the Presidential Scholarship, or so were two other of our students. And she was in Digital Arts and Sciences. And Connor Leas, and I can tell you from from just tracking these two baseball players, Connor and Mike. They've been on the Presidential Scholarship all five semesters at Clarkson. More at Clarkson, we have a student also on the dean's list at Clarkson, the dean's list is three point two five. Presidential Scholars, John pointed out, was three point eight. We have another student, so Skylar Strobel from Wolkett, majoring in Chemical Engineering. That's at Clarkson, I have some more honors for other schools, Alfred State Dean's List honors. That's a, well, they don't give a great point, but Dean's List at Alfred State. Lauren Bullard, Alexis Perkins and Paige Shipley from our school. I have more, it's really a wonderful, I know, Cindy, we're past your eight o'clock deadline, but this is really all good news.
It is, and it's wonderful to to know that our kids are going on and making good achievements. They've got a good basis, so that's wonderful.
Hofstra's Dean's List, Dominic Waring, that's a three point five or greater. SUNY Morrisville, Kiara Tocani as a, that's their dean's list is three point oh to three point nine, so. Again, on the dean's list, all of us, all of them from our area. A whole bunch more, I I know it's, they know it's getting late, but. With the Wayne Technical and Career Center honor roll award winners. Amanda Akins. Tara Blatch, Jenna Bullard, Megan Christian, Abram, I don't know if you're right, it's DeBord or DeBorey. Or DeBordery, Mackenzie DeWolff, Angela Evans, Autumn Egner. Semah Ford, Gordon Faro. Maria Francisco, Kaylee Kell. Mary, Mary Lo Profito, Parker Pavinca. Gilbert Snyder, Austin Smith, Brandon Walsh and Evan, excuse me, Aaron Youngman. All again, honor roll, great, great academic achievements for our school. Both Jason and John alluded to sports. I have, I'd like to highlight some names. By the way, the boys' basketball one games on Monday and Tuesday this week, but indoor track. This is the, from the league championships at RIT. Jack Defoe, six hundred meter, first place, he's the league champion. We had several other young men and women do well on the indoor track, wrestling. Nate Waszinski, first place league champion at the league championship tournament. Noah Waszinski, second place, A.J. Anthony, second place, and I know that A.J. jumped up a whole weight level on that. We had three others placed, well, Clayton Reed in third place, so great wrestling. And then when they went on to the section five championship, that was league championship, when they went on to section five championship again. Noah Waszinski, first place section champion. A.J. Anthony, second place, Nate Waszinski, third place, Logan Cave's third place, these are their different weight levels. And Lathan McDonald at third place and and three others who also made the list. So just great results in in wrestling, swimming. Colby Balkum, all league honorable mention in the fifty freestyle. Matthew Angersall, all league honorable mention, a hundred meter breaststroke. Then Matthew Cole, first team, all league of five hundred free freestyle. And I wanted to mention four others who weren't in the sections, sectionals. But who won a recent tri-school, a relay. So it was the team of, you'll recognize some of these. Smith, Angersall, Matthew Cole and the Milligan, a Caden Milligan, first place in the two hundred yard medley. As John pointed out, we've got a lot of students really doing well and and athletic talent, Jason. Here's a picture of those. Art awards, so four students were at the RIT Start Here Art Show. And two of them received, let me just read their names, Gordon Forrow, Grace King, Adriana Taft and Elber Vasquez. So they were all selected for the art show. Gordon Forrow's sculpture, Jackalope, received the School of American Craft Ceramic Award in Sculpture. And Taft's painting, the, I'm going to pronounce this Saturn Eye Day, I'm not sure if that's correct, the Caterpillar one. School of Design and School of Design Industrial Design Award. Can you see the caterpillar? So well done to all those students that are excelling that are either in our school or graduated from our school.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Michael, shall we move to you? Hopefully you have good news for us too.
Well, we do have some recognition that I'll get to. I do want to start off by thanking the administrators for sticking around, this this next piece is important. That we're on the same page and everybody's hearing the information at the same time. So you'll recall that the governor made announcements yesterday regarding the mask mandates. She did lift them for private business and public entities, however, schools were not included in that mask mandate. Lift, so right now, we're not anticipating any mask mandates being withdrawn. Until the first part of March at the earliest, and the rationale that she's provided has been. She's going to assess the positivity rates that, you know, are certain to come. As people head into February break, so over winter break. We want to make sure that we're sending home the test kits so that staff and students have every possibility to. Provide themselves with a a negative COVID test upon return, and that's one of the things the governor is really. Adamant about doing is waiting to assess that recess period to make sure that we're not having community spread. The likelihood is that that lift will come in the first part of March, but she hasn't made that announcement yet. You'll recall that we have to adhere to not only the governor's mandate, but also the Commission of Education. And the Department of Health, so with that, I want to commend local leaders. That basically wrote a letter to the governor asking for her to allow local control. To provide an exit to the mask mandates. Were included in that letter that you see as a screenshot. There were several representative groups that have done something similar from around the state. My hope is that we are able to look forward and think proactively. And come up with a solution that will work to meet the needs of our students, our staff and certainly our community. You know, we're going to provide a survey out to students next week and really assess where we are. Anticipating that the mask mandates will be lifted because we see that the Omicron variant is all but. Reduced to pretty much nothing. So we're going to put a survey together, we'll put it out to our community next week, we're going to ask specific questions. About virtual or remote instruction and in-person instruction. Our fear, our feelings here are that regardless of whether people believe in masks or not. They're entitled to their opinions and that if the mask mandates are lifted. And people feel most comfortable continuing to wear a mask and attend in person, that we're going to allow them to do so. And we want others to be respectful of that. Process and we want them to be mindful that people view Omicron variant, the Delta variant and COVID nineteen in general. With their own personal point of view and they need to be respectful of others and treat others that way. So we're, we're going to be very intentional with the questions we ask, we're going to be very thoughtful with. The instructional models that we provide and we're going to continue to work with staff, students. And the community to make sure that we're able to meet everybody's needs. So I just want to give the staff kudos for what they've been able to do. There's a lot of people who are suffering from screen fatigue. There are a lot of people who are suffering from the fatigue from all these mandates and questioning the rationale. I'm not in a position to do that, but I would say to you, I'm certainly mindful of many points of view. And we're going to take that into consideration as we move forward. The one thing that I think that we really need to also recognize is the school nursing staff for the role that they've played throughout this pandemic. And if the mask mandates are lifted. The role that they'll continue to play in assessing child, our children's wellbeing and making sure that. We're in the best possible position to care for our students when they're in crisis or when they're ill. And to move forward to minimize the school's spread, but right now. We're just in the discussion phase and I wanted to give that to the Board of Education and our community so. They can start preparing for the, what the future will look like as we head into our February break. And as we come out of that February break, knowing that the mask mandate is certainly going to be a hot topic. Discussion and that we're going to make sure that we're sending those test kits home to our families and staff next week to make sure. That they feel reasonably comfortable coming back with a negative COVID assessment. The last thing I want to say is on the next slide, it's basically thank you. The school, National School Counseling Week was this week, the seventh through the eleventh. There's a proclamation that Senator Pam Helming sent to our district. The the role that our school counselors play has been quite invaluable. This mental health supports that our counselors are able to provide, our school psychologists are able to provide. In addition to the typical SEL lessons that they're performing on a regular basis. They definitely deserve recognition and you've seen over the years, the increase from Teacher Appreciation Week. Board of Education Appreciation Week, School Nurse Week, so now we're recognizing our school counselors and just saying thank you to them for. The role they play in educating our children, help steer them down the pathway toward success. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this time. I'm happy to, you know, carry on a discussion regarding the the mask mandate. And the the thoughts that we we have to anticipate if there are any.
Anyone? No, I think we understand. It's a. Do what we have to do, but I'm, I am very. Certain that. Parents will be happy to have some options.
Yeah, that's our goal is to make sure, we we know there's two sides to to these issues and I I think that that's the important piece. That we're going to provide equity when it comes down to our instructional model and certainly we have to make sure. We keep the fiscal responsibility at the forefront of our decision making. But I think that when we work together with our staff and our community, we're going to come up with a solution that meets everyone's needs. And we're really coming out of this. Mask mandating at the right time, if in fact it does get lifted because warm weather is right around the corner. And we'll be able to make sure that the hand hygiene, the physical distancing isn't intact as much as possible. And the windows are open and we're trying to increase the the fresh air capacity of our building, so. There's a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes, it's been something that we've been prepping for. And we've been cognizant of and now it seems like it's catching more momentum, so. Just want to assure you and the community that we're being very thoughtful and proactive with. That that deadline coming to. Ahead really soon.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did not receive any requests from board, a board member to present. Something to the rest of the board tonight. Is there anything anyone wants to? Present? All right, well, then if I think we have completed our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Linda and Izetta. Any discussion? All in favor? That passes, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all for staying, sticking with us and have a good evening. Good night.